Having a prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our village of Hicksville. It is in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheryl, may we start with roll call, please?
Beverly?
Yes.
Here.
Mark?
Yes.
Kretzky?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
We have a revised agenda on the table tonight, and Cheryl was being so thorough that she was making us do it the correct way, so I would like someone to...
I move a motion that we accept the revised agenda.
I second.
Kretzky made the motion, and Haley seconded. Roll call, please, Cheryl.
Beverly?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kretzky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
May we have approval of the January 4 meeting minutes, please?
I think there's one correction. Not an issue. Council President Mike Mark nominate me.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that incorrect?
No. Ron nominated me.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that his correct?
Okay.
I didn't like that.
All right.
I move approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Beverly moved to approve. Minus Jones seconded. Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Kretzky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Yes.
You have the bills in your packet. Does anyone have any questions about the bills in your packet?
I do, ma'am.
Kent, on first page for the American Electric Power. Have they got back with you any idea when they might start out there?
Until they get the check, he's not going to design anything.
No kidding?
Yeah, they said you got, what did I say, two chances in the third time. That's why we had to pay the $180,000. So once they get the check, then he'll start.
My goodness, I'll drive it over to him in the morning if he's worried about us running out and leaving town. The town's going to leave town.
Yeah, I had to go out for him, so it sounds like he'll get working on that as soon as he gets here.
Okay. Next question. PSI is at the bottom of the back of the first page. What is PSI and what do you geotech? Do you want to answer that?
PSI is a geotechnical contractor. They did the soil borings at the manhole locations for the projects that are going to be ditching, and they prepare a report that shows what the soil types and what they should expect during construction. That'll go into the DIP documents, so they have a price there.
So this accompanies everything you've been doing?
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
Maybe contracted directly with the village. Provided some assistance with some mapping and stuff like that.
Okay, all right.
So the borings were for all the projects in the... I think we did three or four of them. There was a couple of them that we have not done yet, but... Yeah, I saw them on Antwerp Drive.
Yeah.
And I asked what he was doing, and he said, "You should know."
Any surprises, do you know?
We did a test pit on our own, and did a lot where we did the pond earlier, and it was pretty consistent.
Sand?
Sometimes blue clay.
Do you want to go down four foot?
Down, ten maybe, eight maybe.
Okay. The other question I have, what's fire department doing with all them lights?
That is building lighting on the side of the light every night, ceiling lighting.
Uh-huh.
And they're all stating out of donation money.
Okay, that makes it sound better.
And the light bar is also... I brought it from the front of the bus and also from the...
Okay, thank you. And the last thing, I know this has always been on our bills, and I may have asked it before, 10 years ago, but we get uniforms from Knox and we get them from Miller's, and we always have a charge for the street and refuse for uniform rental, and then we also have it again in street from the Miller's bill. What's the deal there?
We've got to get this straight. Knox supplies the pants for Bo, because nobody had never been able to fit him.
Uh-huh.
So that's all we get from Knox is his pants. It used to be him and David, but David's no longer there.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, and unless somebody else does, I move we pay the bills.
I was going to mention on the real estate taxes. I've got to do a bunch of running tomorrow. I'm going to swim through Defiance. She gave me like the highlighted sheet that I'm proud of.
All right.
I'm going to find out how we lost part of the water tower. I think I've got an idea on that one. The two new yellow ones, Arthur Street, that's a Veterans Memorial. The State Route 49, that's the new industrial garage. And that one, I'm also turning in the tax exempt papers on, and maybe within a year we'll get a bit of a refund on that. And then that last one, the last bottom corner, I fought with them for a year over that because we never owned it, and finally dropped it. The other two I need to talk to, the other more along the lines of these, they've been bowled on, so it won't amount to much, because I think they've got a couple other mistakes.
We have a motion to approve the bills. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Beverly moved to pay the bills, and Jones seconded. No real roll call, Cheryl.
Kretzky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Mark?
I'm staying.
Okay. We have public notice in your packet. Notice appearing at 5:00 PM on January 21, rezoning on Wendell Avenue. And then on your amended agenda, Cheryl's making a note that there's going to be a hearing, we have to announce the hearing from the rezoning on Ogen Street before council, so it's going to be heard at the February 1 council meeting. That's what she's telling you.
That's on which one, Diane?
Ogen Street.
I can help you. The planning commission are you through? We just do a notice that we'll have a public hearing at our next meeting, and then it has to be approved or denied within 15 days of that, so... I have a little... For a comment on that?
Yeah.
As you discuss everything, and then it turned to people being concerned about some water and different things, and then Mike S. said, "Let's get back to topic." We discussed this before when they were looking at some properties someplace. I would think, and I didn't have time to research it, I wish I would have, I would think that reassigning a zoning regulation for a piece of property, whether it floods and whether you can get sewage to it or utilities to it, all those things should be a big key factor in whether you change the zoning or not.
Yeah, I saw that too, but I just wondered if maybe the conversation got real sideways. I don't know. I mean, it wasn't there yet.
But from the notes, it did not get sideways.
Yeah.
It was like pretty straightforward.
But it just says they started talking about the ditch.
Right.
Who knows?
Possibly all the flooding because of the creek and different things like that. To me, those are key items.
I agree.
Whether, you know, are we going to just leave it whatever it is because it hasn't been used, so it must be working, or we're going to say, "Hey, sure, you can build a house there," and then as soon as the village approves the zoning, the house is built, then whoever built that house is here at every meeting wanting to know what the village is going to do about their water problem.
Well, shouldn't we see the plans of this builder before we...
I would think.
I don't... Mike's not here. I don't think he's got plans. I think some of the... I could be off on this, so I would call Mike to hear it firsthand. If I understand right, the people are holding off buying the properties till they are rezoned. As far as I understand, they're building a home, but whether anybody knows exactly which lot or any of that, I'm not sure. Mike's been handling this, not me.
I would just suggest you stop by to talk to Mike, see if he can answer your questions for those of you who have questions about it.
Before we move?
Before, yeah, Mike Bailey in the next couple of weeks.
But I, hopefully, there's other, besides just me, that agrees with what I said.
Well, we don't need more flooding. We have enough of that right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Adam Waters here from EMH and TT is going to update us on the sewer projects that he's been working on. You can scoop that out if it's a little tight for you back there, Adam.
Okay.
All right.
We had a meeting with the Utilities Committee earlier today. I won't go through all of it because it was two hours long, but the highlights of that are that we have projects that are going to be coming out to bid soon. There's three groups of projects that are going to go together. The first of which are two smaller projects on Ogen Street and on Columbia Street. Columbia Street is an extension of a storm sewer from a ditch line that will go to Columbia Street and will intercept and replace all of the existing catch basins on Columbia. It'll also extend down to Pearl and go up to Pearl, up to High, and there'll be a small separation on Pearl Street also at the south end of that. What that project's going to do is it's going to remove some clean water intrusion into the combined sewer there, provide a little bit of relief to the pump station at Defiance Avenue, and it'll improve the drainage conditions on Columbia Street slightly. It's not a large drainage improvements project. There's a very large tributary area that runs through that neighborhood. It will make some improvement to that. It won't completely solve the problems that there are existing at the far east end of Columbia Street, but it'll improve that a little bit. That was the first project that we designed. It's done. I have the bid book on my desk at the office, and it's ready to advertise anytime.
Will that help with CSOs?
It will. It won't eliminate them, but it will help them.
Okay.
We're tying in probably a dozen catch basins that tie into the combined sewer, so it'll remove all of those. So it's just an inflow removal project. It's a small but difficult project because we have two gravity lines that we are crossing, and we have laterals from each of them that are going over each other, so it's going to be kind of a little, pretty complicated little crisscross running down Columbia, but we've spent a lot of time looking at that, and I think we're going to miss all of that or be able to do them. The second project is also designed, Ron and I, we're going to look at something probably the week after next and make some changes to the project on Ogen Street, but that we're going to extend a gravity sanitary sewer along Ogen and then to the back of a few homes on Perry that will make a watertight and completely separated sewer system in that neighborhood. We originally thought that we might need to replace that pump station, but Ron and I talked enough today. I think maybe there's a chance we're going to be able to eliminate that. But nonetheless, within about three weeks, that project is also going to be ready to bid. We've done a preliminary cost estimate of about $850,000 on it. We may be able to reduce the cost of that project by 40 or 50 percent if we can find what we're looking for next week.
Did you have a cost for the Columbia Street project?
I do, but I didn't share with you. It's about $550,000. Those are the first two projects that are going to be ready to bid, and we want to put them together in a package. They probably advertise on the same day, possibly. Roberto is going to investigate, you know, if there's opportunity for a community development block grant in the Ogen Street neighborhood. If that ends up being a dead end, those projects will probably bid together very soon. If it's a good opportunity for that grant, we'll probably separate them and maybe bid them in the fall, or maybe bid one of them with another group of projects later in the spring. There's a second group that will be ready in March, late March, early April. I think I'd probably be coming to your second council meeting in April with prices from bids for those. That's the Antwerp Drive and the Haver Drive projects, and those are much, much larger projects. I don't have a complete cost estimate for those yet, but I can tell you those will be million-dollar-plus projects. Antwerp Drive originally began as a mid-sized storm sewer extension from the creek near the treatment plant in order to alleviate some flooding. It was just kind of focused on the Antwerp Drive project. After this summer, the flooding that you saw all over town was directed to extend that, increase the size of it to be able to handle a 100-year storm and be able to serve future extensions, so we've done that. We have 42-inch, 30-inch, and 60-inch pipes on those roads, profiled, designed, and in the plans I have rolled up there. Last thing I've got to do is design the pond, and we will be bidding that. You know, I've got to clean the plans up. I've got to do the pond. Right now, it just exists as a sketch on pen and pencil from my hand, but we'll be done with that pretty soon and be ready to advertise that. You'll be able to use this project as a base to extend drainage improvements north, to the north limits of your village, north all the way up Chicago and Arthur Drive to the very limits of the village. So this will be something that you're continuing to use probably 50 years from now for future improvements. It will have a large pond on that three-acre piece at the bottom of Antwerp Drive, probably be between three and four feet deep when it's completely full, but that will control 100-year storm in that pond. So that's a regional project. The second one that will be coming out in this second package is Haver Drive, and it's going to include the extension of a new sanitary sewer that is watertight and airtight from the existing pump station. That will eliminate the overflows that the pump station's experiencing right now. There's going to be also the extension of a water line along Haver that will replace one that's in danger of a failure right now, and will make some minor drainage improvements on Haver also. We're going to make cross-sectional improvements on the road. We're going to be crossing it so many times with water sewer and storm sewers that it doesn't really make any sense to patch it, so we're going to plane and use leveling intermediate coarse asphalt to provide a new consistent cross-section and make drainage and ditch improvements on the sides of the roads with new driveway culverts and improved grading also. So there'll be a lot of improvements on Haver with the drainage, and then we talked today. We're going to design a storm sewer extension from the creek and have inlets available for people to make connections in front of their properties and bid that as an alternate just so he can see the cost and maybe think about that a little bit more. Yes, sir.
Are you going to, when you go down through, there was new culverts. Everybody's getting a culvert, and all the tile and the dirt's coming out.
Yeah. It'd be a consistent ditch cross-section. We're going to have a small shoulder, go down to three to one, have a two-foot bottom, so basically you've got a 12-foot or 12-inch ditch, and then, you know, the drive culvert will have a little bit over that, and then we're going to match the existing grate one foot inside the existing right of way, and that'll be through the whole thing. New drive culverts and new driveways also at the aprons, so... In Haver, the most difficult part of that project will probably be the construction of the laterals. That's going to be a tough part of the project because right now, a lot of those have connections to leach fields or curtain drains or downspouts, and those will need to be eliminated. So we're continuing to discuss how best to handle that, but that will be challenging. The second two projects are the Chicago Avenue Drainage Improvements, which in the grand scheme of things, that's a fairly small project, but it'll include, you know, a retention pond, probably be a dry pond that'll help limit the flow east onto Chicago Avenue. But then the biggest project of all of them, the South Bryan, South Main Street Storm Sewer Separations, that will go the farthest to reducing the overflows at your plant. The large 30-inch storm sewer that ties into the tunnel on Bryan will be separated, and that'll be routed directly to the creek. So I'm very anxious to find out, you know, what that does to your overflows, and we'll see that with the metering that you do at your plant. I would think that those are probably going to be this summer. We're going to have the same team that's completing the Antwerp and the Haver projects. They'll probably team up on that project once they're done with both of those. I can't answer any questions there are, but those are the highlights, I think. It's going to be a lot happening in the next 60 to 90 days.
You said when you were talking about Defiance and Ogen and Pearl and Perry and Columbia, about the need to possibly not do anything or replace the lift station?
No matter what?
No matter what, there's going to be a lift station there.
Yeah.
What you meant was whether it needs to be built or not?
Right. Correct. Yeah. At best case, the existing station will stay as it is. Worst case, we would have to build a new one that is deeper. So I think we're going to be able to get away from that.
Does anyone have any questions for Adam? Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Roberta, do you have anything to add?
No, I would say there was any other questions for me.
Well, thank you for coming to Hicksville, Ohio for a earlier meeting today. Thank you both.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your long day.
We just have a point of interest on the agenda, item number 10, that the park board is going to be replacing a member on the park board. And I believe they... That's Marlon Iker that's going off, right? And I believe they might have someone in mind. They're going to discuss it at their next meeting and bring it to us, so... Committee reports. We have the Planning Commission, January 7 meeting minutes for you to review and know what's going on. You have the Hicks TV, November 14 and January 9 meeting minutes. You have the police fire EMS, January 8 meeting minutes. Do you have anything to add to that from the committee?
She'll be bringing a recommendation. She'll be bringing you a recommendation.
Okay. Lonnie will be bringing a recommendation for the Assistant Chief?
Correct.
All right. And then you have some revolving loan committee meeting minutes in there from January 7 just to keep you updated on that. Are there any other committee reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that we met with Adam and Roberta at 4 o'clock today, the committee. They were a lot more detailed on all these projects. There's a couple of things we're going to, you know, look back over, some minor details and which direction we want to go before we brought it to committee, I mean council and everything. We're actually going to meet again. Water Sewer is going to meet on Monday, January 25 at 4 o'clock to look over some of the ideas that we had tonight with Ron and Kent and Jesse also, looking at our water tower issue, and then some of the things we talked about earlier today. So I wanted to thank... They have left. They go over there. They spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of money with the engineers. Roberta, you know, she's kind of, she doesn't get financial gain from being here, working with grants and different applications for our city. She looks at the loans, the grants, helps with the engineering projects, and she's very informative, but she does a lot for our city. She's been here a number of years helping us, so I thank her immensely for helping us with these projects, so...
She can come over some money.
Yes. Speaking of money, just to let you know, we applied for the U.S. EPA GLI grant. That was with the University of Toledo for that bonding project. We did not get it, but, you know, it doesn't put us behind an eight hole or anything. There are some other grants out there that we can look for for these projects down the road, so...
We've got to make the EPA...
You've got to apply for them.
But you've got to make the EPA...
Absolutely.
Projects have to be...
Right. We have a certain timeline to do them in. Of course, they have not given us the final okay on our long-term control plan. Of course, we kind of get to run around on that every time. Can't call them or check with Andy or anybody, and it's frustrating, but, you know, these projects are going to help the system, help the community, and go forward with the contamination issues that we have, so... All right?
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any other committee reports? Did you want to say anything about your first committee board meeting? Um, with New Year's Eve. Don Brown's retiring. There's a good group of people. Lois Daniels, Matt, Jane. Good group of people. All right. It's very interesting. And we have in our packet there, I noticed, that we have the 2015 cash flow report and the 2016 budget for your review. In case you have any questions, Cheryl might be a little new to ask, but I'm sure she can certainly find out the answers for you. No other committee reports? Okay.
I would tell the chief, I found this very interesting, chief.
Yeah. Okay. Administrator's report?
Somebody's got a question.
Well, I'm happy to see that several of your employees had some good test results and got their mosquito spraying education done.
It's a hard task, so it might be something we want to talk about next. It's water shooters. Okay.
Nothing else to add, Cap?
Kent, have you heard anything part of the striking process?
No. Hopefully, it'll be fairly soon since it's been a couple of weeks since there in town.
Right.
All right, we will continue on with miscellaneous, and Mr. Essex?
First thing I have is Resolution 2015-25, a third reading by caption only. A resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Dave Brown Designs for construction of the Veterans Memorial.
No one cares to...
Resolution 2015-26, a third reading by caption only. A resolution authorizing the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to dispose of personal property which is unneeded, obsolete, or unfit for municipal purposes.
That's the Christmas decor, the old Christmas decor.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion on the third reading. Sorry.
Beverly moved to approve, and Mark seconded. Roll call, please, Cheryl.
Beverly?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kretzky?
Yes.
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
One of the easements, Kent has all of the easements as of tonight for, or that Adam asked me to prepare for the Columbia slash Pearl, and I went ahead even though I was told there might be some changes to them. I did the ones for the Ogen Street project he had sent me 10 days or so ago. Adam had the legal descriptions and the drawings for those Ogen Streets, so Kent has those, and it's my understanding he's going to ask Mike Bailey to see if he'll get ahold of the people to start getting them signed up and everything. And then the last thing on the list there, I'd request an executive session to discuss that, pending litigation. That's all I have.
Shall we wait for that at the end of the meeting? All right, you guys? Okay. And what is happening with Dennis Valley Land and Industrial Park?
As a matter of fact, I was waiting to get the approval back. I talked to Jerry Hayes last week. He's ready to go now, so it's just a matter, I got a deed that you'll need to sign that we approved back a while ago. I was waiting for the approvals from the engineer's office, so I'm going to be in Hicksville a couple of times this week, so sometime this week I'll probably have that deed for you to sign, and the deed is on its way to the people from the CIC that need to sign, and then we got, Jerry's been talking to Denny about getting a closing set up to finalize that, so I'd say in the next week to 10 days that should all be done.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. Anything else, Troy?
No.
Anybody else have anything that they want to mention in there? Okay. Well, we will ask the police chief if he has anything he wants to discuss tonight.
I don't have any comments.
I really liked your year-end report, that was very informative to read.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Senior Packer on the table tonight found a 2015 year-end fire report.
Great, thank you very much. And EMS chief?
At this time, I'd like to make a recommendation that Cody Royer be named as our assistant chief. Get the recommendation of Royer.
I would recommend that Cody Royer be the assistant chief.
I would make a motion to me accept the mayor's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Mr. Headley moved to approve the mayor's recommendation and Ron Beverly seconded. When you're ready, you can do roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Kretzky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Lonnie, do you have anything else? Thank you very much for your year-end report also, they're all very informative, helps us realize what you, what all kinds of things you're working on. Thank you. Now, we have that annual election of board members of the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund, and I believe Ron Beverly has agreed to continue to be board secretary. Have all these people been contacted about staying on the list? Okay. So I believe this is pretty much for informational purposes. I guess we should probably have a motion to approve this and have it on record. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Jones made the motion and Headley seconded to approve the board members. You may do roll call when you can.
Yes. Kretzky?
I'm staying.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
I think I should do it. Yeah, I'm staying.
Beverly?
Are there any members in the audience that would like to say anything tonight? Any guests? All right. Well, I just have a few notations of the, wow, back page. I thought, boy, something's missing here. Cheryl, would you like to give your report? I guess you can point out all the things in the packet that you put in.
I have, yeah, my state unit cash statement 2016. I've prepared the utility report for 2015, the property tax list that Kent went over, and we have the cemetery report for the year in 2015, and also their next year.
Thank you. Anything else you have to add to that?
No.
All right. I wrote several things at the bottom of the last agenda, the last two weeks ago, but I was just kind of in a fog with my first meeting and I just felt so out of place not sitting over there, so I'll just mention a few things tonight, but I wanted to ask about the signs at the industrial park. Who's like, is, who's working on that?
I thought I'm talking to Kent, excuse me. You were using, you can explain it better to me, the covenant with the revolving loan fund with the.
Oh, yeah, if you want to use your mayor, council of the.
That committee to, you want that committee to?
I just.
Choose a sign? Okay.
They might not want to do it either, but.
Okay. That's quite a good idea.
Well, when I was mayor, I worked on that and at Kent's suggestion, that's how we were, that's how we were going about it, and I would have been on it, I mean, now Diane is.
Are some of the other players from out there, are they on that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And also, there are pictures, so.
That's a good suggestion, Kent. I'd just like to remind people that when it snows, so please clean off your sidewalks. I saw a lady trying to push a baby stretcher through snow-covered sidewalks the other day and I thought really bad for her because she was really struggling, and then you have, you know, older people and male people and everybody, you know, just be nice if you could keep your sidewalks cleaned off, and also, there's people around town that are so nice and they either have tractors or something and they just clean off a whole long sidewalk stretch and kind of do their neighborhood, and thank you to those people because someone goes clear out to the school, and that's just really nice, and thank you to those people who are doing that and looking out for their neighbors. I'd like to remind the council members to check their mailboxes, and I think you have been explaining that you have a mailbox over there. Okay, all right. I don't know if you're all checking them or not, but I just tried to bring it up. And then I would also like to remind residents and all of you here that on our website, villageofhicksville.com, we have a calendar of events, and people remind me every now and then that they really would appreciate it if people would get that posted on our website as soon as they know that they're planning an event, because the different service organizations in town would like to plan their activities around things that are already planned and don't want to hold them on the same date. So for those of you, churches, anybody that has dinners or anything going on, just you can call the village offices or bring us a flyer and we'll get it on the calendar of events on the village website, villageofhicksville.com. That way, when someone wants to plan something, they can look at it and see if anything else is planned on that date. Actually, someone just asked me to set the Halloween date for October. So, anyway, does anybody have anything else?
Did you set it?
Yes, I did. I set it for the last Saturday in October. Well, I felt a little, I felt a little uncomfortable setting it that far ahead, but it's done, so. Have I forgotten anything?
Mayor, I have asked that we go into an executive session, legislation.
Possible soon to be pending, we'll leave it that way.
Possible pending legislation and a brief discussion on the revolving.
Okay, we're going into executive session, we have a motion by Ron Beverly to go in for possible pending legislation and we're in discussion of a revolving loan fund. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Headley. May we have roll call, Cheryl?
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Edley?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Kretzky?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
All right.